Well, shall we call our meeting to order? Where did you go?
Is Don here?
Let's see, do we have Sarah or Dara helping with the callers today?
It looks like we're still waiting for Don.
Oh, we are waiting for Don, okay. Any word from Don yet?
Not yet.
And through the chair, we do have a quorum. So depending upon your preference, we could get started and if Don joins us, I'll make note that he is here.
Okay.
That could be one way to do it, or if you want to give a little bit more time, it's up to you.
Well, let's see. Give it just a few more seconds.
Lisa, there is an unknown number that I don't recognize, but it might be Don calling in from a different cellphone number. Would you like me to check?
Sure, you can check and we can see who that is. And if it's not Don, then they can just be put back in on hold for a public comment.
It looks like Don just logged on.
Oh, great. That's all.
Hello, Don.
Bradley here.
Hello, Commissioner Bradley. Welcome.
Thank you.
We'll get started. So good evening, everyone, and I would, I'll bring the meeting of December 20th of the San Carlos Planning Commission to order. And as always, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. A roll call, please.
Apologize for that. Commissioner Garvey.
Present.
Commissioner Yakapony.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
And for the record, Vice Chair Clements is absent this evening. Chair Ruth.
Present. The next item on our agenda is public comment, and public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, Government Code, Section 54954.2. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have the matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. So you can join the meeting via Zoom or via phone. And Sarah, do we have anyone in the waiting room for this public comment period? You can click raise hand at the bottom of your screen if you're on Zoom, or if you're joining by phone, press star nine and star six to unmute.
Yes, I see David has a raised hand. I'm going to go ahead and ask to unmute.
Welcome, David.
Hello.
Yes, we hear you.
Great. Hey. All right. Hey, my name is David Tuzman. Hi, it's the commissioners and planning developer. Al Seve. I'm calling here to tell you about a really amazing event that I went to a few weeks ago over Thanksgiving weekend. It was a live music event put on by some high school and college age folks in town. It was fully conceived and organized and run by them. It was a live music event in the backyard. I biked down there with my wife Karen, and we just basked in the music and positive creative energy that this young community had built from the ground up. And especially in this time of COVID and social distancing, we know has affected school edge kids the most. And led by 20-year-old Daniel Villasenior, this substance-free show, all ages inclusive. In his parents' backyard, it was just brimming with joy and catharsis, the ability to gather with friends in a safe space. Karen and I immediately recognized that this unique project is something we want to personally uplift and support any way we can. And we think it's something San Carlos can really be proud of, that this homegrown music community, something unique throughout the peninsula, is really thriving here. And I learned recently that they've been having issues with permitting. I guess since it's a residential zone and some technicalities there. And I'm happy to hear that the city and Mr. Seve will be working with Daniel to figure out how to get that permit worked out and what sort of parameters of their event would be useful to help it operate better and within the bounds of the city. So thank you, and I hope to hear more about that event. And I hope folks on the commission might even attend those events because they are absolutely amazing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I gather that item has been referred to staff already, so we'll keep our fingers crossed that a good solution comes up with. Good luck. Sarah, is there anyone else in the waiting room for the public comment period?
Yes, Daniel has his hand raised. I'm going to go ahead and ask to unmute.
Okay, welcome. Welcome, Daniel. We have, hi, you have two minutes. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Daniel. I lived in San Carlos my whole life, and I'm the one who's been throwing concerts in the backyard. I started throwing concerts after going to college in Pomona, and they have an amazing music scene. And because I have the skills, face and networks to throw concerts, I knew I got to do something here in San Carlos, too. I've seen positive, I've seen firsthand how my concerts have positively impacted all the kids that come to it. There's really not a music scene here in Silicon Valley, which is kind of a bummer. I, for all I know, I'm one of the only safe spaces here where kids can show off their art and perform to like-minded individuals. And the people who perform at these concerts, they're so good. They dedicate so much of their time to their craft. And to me, it feels like an obligation to throw these concerts because I really, really want to see my friends' music heard by people all over, perform all over the country. And it's been really cool seeing how there's been friendships, relationships, music, that all started at the first domino, which has been my concert. Just recently, I got hit with a cease and desist letter from the city attorney stating that I'm breaking municipal code 1823240. And this violation, it pretty much states how I need to get a permit to throw these events, but the permits cost 2,500, which is a little too much. And I'd really like to work with the city to find a compromise so I can continue throwing concerts in my backyard. My shows are all ages, drug-free, and my parents are always around and other adulterant attendants. And I believe y'all in this situation isn't the bad guy, rather it's just a couple of neighbors who are very disgruntled. And I really believe I'm providing a lot of good for a lot of people with the music scene here in San Carlos. And just this past year, I was able to help San Carlos get a huge mural at the crepe stop. And I think the positive impact that that has had on the city is crazy. And a strong drug-free, all-ages youth music scene is something that I think our city could really be proud of. And it could really, really help a lot of the kids coming out of COVID finally get a time to socialize and meet with new people. I really hope you guys work with me in finding a way that we can compromise to continue having these concerts. And I'd like to invite you all to my next concert coming up on January 6th in Palo Alto. It's going to be a really great time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Sarah, do we have anyone else in the waiting room?
Yes, it looks like Leah Dunn would like to speak.
Hello, Leah. Hi.
Hi, I'm Leah.
Please, welcome.
Okay, yeah, so I was a performer at the Thanksgiving concert that Daniel threw, and it was an absolutely wonderful experience. I also wanted to point out that it was a totally sober environment, so there was no drugs or alcohol on the premises. So that was also a really positive part of the experience. Also, when I was younger and I was trying to become a better songwriter, I would have to haul all the way up to San Francisco just to go to open mics. And it would have been really great if there were something like the scene that Daniel has created now when I was younger. And so I think it's important to continue fostering an artistic community that's homegrown here in San Carlos so that people on the peninsula don't feel like they have to go all the way up to San Francisco. But you know, not everyone has a car to get to the city, not everyone has the kind of gas money, not everyone has, you know, 45 minutes, an hour, two hours to get all the way up there. So yeah, I think it's really important that we at least find an affordable solution to this permit situation. Yeah, so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Sarah, do we have anyone else in the waiting room?
I see Kayla Jackson. Going to go ahead and ask you to unmute.
Kayla, but we don't hear you yet. You need to unmute?
Oh, gotcha.
Oh, gotcha. So welcome. Two minutes comment, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to read, iterate the points that were just made and to say that I really support the music scene that Daniel has provided for all these artists. I met him in the summer and I sent to a couple of his concerts, and it's just been a really great way to create a cultural hub, create solidarity within the community. I met so many really cool people there and heard a lot of artists expressing their voice. And it's just been a really lovely and wonderful thing, and I'm really grateful for the space that he provides. That's all.
Okay, thank you for your comment, Kayla. Sarah, do we have anyone else in the waiting room?
There's no one else in the waiting room.
Okay, well, so for the record, this, this issue has been referred to the staff, Lisa, and it's being dealt with? Is that the follow-up?
I haven't, I haven't spoken to Al Seve, but I think Andrea Marticich, who's on the call, may have some information regarding that. Do you have any info, Andrea?
I do. Thank you. So through the chair, I have spoken with Al Seve, our Community Development Director, and we are in the process of gathering all of the information needed to submit for review, as well as looking through the code to see, make sure that we're finding all, you know, applicable code sections that could apply. So my, my guess is that I would be reaching out to Daniel probably tomorrow. I'm actually in the process this evening of finalizing some research that I'm going to send over. So it has been referred to staff, and we are going to be reaching out to Daniel and working with him in the next few weeks, I'm sure.
Okay, good to hear that staff is on it. And Sarah, unless somebody else has joined the waiting room, then maybe we can close. We can close the public comment period and move to the, and move to the approval of the minutes.
No changes from each chair?
Okay. Any changes from other commissioners? I see Commissioner Yakapony?
Thank you, Chair Ruth. One small edit, please. Packet page five. I made a comment and it was stated as a statement rather than a question. It's in the middle. It, it reads, Sarah Codona said that in this, sorry, the sentence above, Commissioner Yakapony asked if there was no balcony or mid-landing and only an area to enter and exit the unit, would it be approved? Not, it would be approved. So just same words, just if you could rephrase it as the question intended, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from commissioners? I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes with the correction mentioned by Commissioner Yakapony.
I'll move that we accept the minutes. And accept for that.
On second. We have a motion and a second to roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
And Chair Ruth.
Yes. The next item on our agenda is the public hearing. And the staff will present a report on the history, physical features on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation thereafter. Interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speaker should state their name prior to addressing the commission. This was the staff in preparing the minutes. And the first item is 104 Sunnydale Avenue, APN 051401010. App 2021-00007, Appeal of Director Approval of the Location of the External Stairs That Provide Ingress and Egress to a Proposed Second-story Accessory Dwelling Unit. And this item is continued from the December 6th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Staff, you have a report?
Yes, I do. Good evening, Commissioners and Chair Ruth. My name is Sarah Codona, Contract Assistant Planner with the City of San Carlos. The item before you is a request for an appeal of the director's decision to approve the location of an external staircase accessing a second-story ADU over an attached garage at 104 Sunnydale Avenue. This item was continued from the December 6th Planning Commission meeting to today, December 20th, to discuss an alternative location for the stairs. To refresh your memory, the approved plans are for a first-story addition in the second-story ADU over an attached garage. The proposed two-bedroom ADU will be about 790 square feet. The previous approved staircase location was located towards the rear/interior side property line. During the December 6th Planning Commission meeting, the item was continued to give the applicant team, building and planning, a chance to sit down and find a staircase location that addresses the neighbors' concerns and needs building and planning code requirements. On December 9th, a meeting was held with the applicant team, building and planning, to review alternative stair locations. The highlighted image on this slide is the proposal for the new alternative stair location, which consists of moving the staircase closer to the Sunnydale street frontage, having the staircase as one continuous runway with a mid-stair landing and a direct access walkway, which still meets ingress and egress standards. Here are the elevations for the newly proposed alternative stair location. The applicant, as well as city staff, has been in contact with the neighbors who expressed privacy concerns at the previous Planning Commission meeting. Both neighbors at 1730 Elm Street and 108 Sunnydale Avenue are satisfied with the new staircase location, and those written comments can be found starting on packet page 69. The applicant also sent a signed letter to city staff after the packets were already published, which was sent to the commissioners this morning. This letter provides a statement that the appellant is satisfied with the alternative stair location. They also expressed other concerns beyond the location of the ADU stairs. These other concerns are beyond the scope of the appeal, and staff will verify anything onsite and make sure it is compliant with our code requirements. Here's the motion. If you choose to accept it, staff, as well as the appellant and the applicant are present to answer any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do the planning commissioners have any questions before we open for, well, let me clarify, is the app, is the appellant, would they like to make a presentation or are they just available for questions?
Samaya, if you would like to speak, you can raise your hand.
Well, let's, let's entertain any questions from the planning commissioners before we, and then if, if the appellant joins, oh, here we go.
Hello. Yes.
Hello, welcome, Samaya.
Planning Commissioner, thank you for your time. I just wanted to thank Planning Department and our neighbor for relocating the stair. And I just wanted to bring it up that my other concerns stated in the letter were part of the appeal and as our neighbor is fully informed, so it was the most important portion of the appeal that was considered as not appealable by the city attorney. So I just wanted to point it out that these two other concerns were part of the appeal. And it was found that it's not appealable, so I just wanted to point this out. And, and also I just wanted to say that I'm truly grateful for all the hard work that our neighbor just put together the new revised plan. And I also appreciate the time that the Planning Department just put reviewing the appeal and the revised plan. And I would truly appreciate if our neighbor would consider the other two statement. I mean, one of them is just revising plan for the correct location of the existing fireplace, which is shown now outside of the setback, but that's not correct. It is fully inside the setback and two and a half feet away from the wood bins, as I stated. And also, as I just pointed out to Andrea and Sarah, we have the word in the code maximize the neighbor's privacy. And I understand that the window meets the minimum code, but having the obscured window, which is sliding, I, I don't see how the obscured window, when it's open fully toward the backyard, would maximize the privacy. So I just wanted to point out this like privacy concern when the window sliding is open, looking down the backyard. And I just wanted to say that in the last meeting, I was told that somehow I'm anti, anti-renters, but I'm not. I, I'm right now joining the meeting from another part of the world, from my parents' home, but I'm still missing my home in San Carlos. So it's a very, very difficult and confusing feeling that I'm sitting here and my parents are sleeping in the other room, and they cannot come and visit my home. And I love seeing my neighbor's parents living in that ADU because that's what I dream for myself. So I'm not anti-renters, and I totally support ADU because that's what I would do for my own parents to come visit me. But the privacy concern, as it comes to the code as well, and it's been appreciated by the municipal code, it's not, it's not against renter. It's just a simple right of the neighbors to be preserved. That's it. Thank you so much for hearing me.
Okay, well, thank you. So let's see, we can do, we can see if there are any commissioner questions before we open this item for public comment. Any clarifying questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to open for public comment.
I'll move we'll.
Lisa, you're on mute.
So I have a motion?
Through the chair, you don't even have a motion to open it. It's really to just close it because of the next.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. So we won't, we don't need to bother with that. So if you would like to make a public comment on Agenda Item 6A, 104 Sunnydale Avenue, now is the time to speak. And you may join the Zoom meeting or call the phone number and use the raise hand icon or press star nine to speak. And Sarah, is there anyone lined up to speak?
There is no one currently waiting to speak.
Okay, well, now I guess I need, I do need to solicit a motion to close the public comment period.
I will move that we close the public comment period.
And a second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
And Chair Ruth.
Yes. Well, now we have an opportunity for Planning Commission discussion. Are there comments? I see Commissioner Garvey, you raise your hand.
Thank you, Chair Ruth. One of the concerns, the main concern that I had with this the last time, which was how does the stair affect the, the location of the utilities? And what is the length of the process that the applicant would need to go through with PG&E to relocate the utilities has been very nicely addressed with this new staircase. The stairs are further to Sunnydale. They are further away from the neighbors that were concerned. And the utilities can remain in place. The other thing that I liked about this nice solution is the landing in the stairs so that it kind of breaks it up a little bit. It's not just one, one long run. And so I really liked the, the new staircase, and I'll be supportive of, of the project. I also liked that staff said in their presentation that they would be making sure that all the city codes are met with the other issues that the appellant raised. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I agree with Commissioner Garvey. Appreciate the work our staff and the owners and neighbors have put in on this. Seems like a all trivial aspect, but it's important and it's worked out well, I think, in the end.
Thank you.
Maybe, maybe I just put in the thought that it's not always that we come up with a question among. Maybe, maybe I just put in the thought that it's not always that we come up with a question amongst neighbors that is resolved to general or mostly everyone satisfied. So it's good to see it and just appreciate the architect, the, the applicant, the appellant and the next door neighbor for working together for a good outcome.
Thank you. And I'll echo all those comments from my fellow commissioners. It is nice to see that the process works and, and they, and a good resolution has, has been arrived at. So I would entertain a motion to, as shown on the screen here.
I would be happy to motion. So let me just make sure I have the format right, but I motion that the planning commission uphold the appeal of Samaya Marosani on the condition that the external stairs are located as shown on the plans that are date stamped December ninth, twenty twenty one, which allows for ingress negress to access the second story ADU located at one zero four Sunnydale Avenue, APN zero five one four zero one zero one zero.
Is that all right? And let me just make sure, before we get a second, do I have a comment from Commissioner Garvey?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that from Lisa, that December ninth is in fact the date that the new plans with the new staircase are dated.
Correct. That should be in your packet. And if Sarah, if you want to mention what page that's on for the record so that the commission can indeed verify that, please go ahead and let us know what page the, where that we might see that date stamp on the plans, if you have that.
Yes. So it should be attachment number five, which is. One second. Which should start on. Should start on packet page fifty seven.
Okay. As long as it says December ninth, I'm, I'm, I'm very happy with that and I will second the motion.
Okay. I have a motion in a second to roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
And Chair Roof?
Yes. The next item in our public hearing is eleven twenty nine Old County Road, APN zero four six one seven one one five zero. Feel in twenty twenty one dash zero 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 nine seven. Request for an amendment to the planning development PD zoning district ordinance thirteen sixty three. Staff have a presentation here?
We do. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Andrea Marticich, Principal Planner. I will be presenting this item tonight on behalf of Chris DeCumos, who's one of our consulting senior planners. And Chair Roof, as you mentioned, the item before you this evening is a request for an amendment to a planned development zoning district, which is PB twenty. This evening, we are asking you to consider the item and recommending that you recommend this ordinance to the city council for consideration. The subject site is located in the Home Depot Lucky Shopping Center on Old County Road. It's a, it's in the middle of the block between Britton Avenue and Howard Avenue. And the surrounding area is primarily consisting of regional retail, which are buildings above twenty five thousand square feet. And then there's also a smaller building right across the driveway, which is currently occupied by the Dollar Store. The site that's under review this evening is the vacant building on an approximately point six two acre site. It's an existing fifty three hundred square foot building and previous uses at the site have included both pet related retail and services. And I believe the most recent use was the dog, the dog pool business. The site is located within the PD twenty zoning district, so that covers the entire site from bound by Britton Avenue and Howard, as well as Old County Road and is a general commercial industrial general plan land use reservation. I do want to point out that although this is part of a larger PV, the recommendation and proposal this evening applies only to this one building and would not affect Home Depot Lucky or the Dollar Store Building and would just modify the ordinance for this particular building and site. Hi, thank you. So as I mentioned, this is a request to amend the planned development zoning district. And it's, there's really two basic requests. The first is to remove a current restriction that, that requires this building to remain one tenant space. So the applicant is requesting to remove that restriction to allow for more than one tenant in the future. And then the second request is also to allow for additional commercial uses. And I will go through each of those on the next few slides. But before I do that, I just wanted to provide a, sorry, next slide, a brief background of the site. I did include in the staff report an approval history of the subject site. As you probably have seen, it's very complicated. There's been a lot of ordinances modifying the site itself. So I'm just going to focus on this particular portion of the overall larger site. So ordinance thirteen sixty three, which was adopted in two thousand and five, provided for a plan of development of one new retail building at this site. There was also the requirement for a use permit at the same time, which also outlined some of the architectural features of the new building and outlined some additional requirements for the tenant at the time, which was a pet food express. The site was restricted to the one tenant to limit negative impacts to downtown businesses. At the time and, and currently pet related retail and services were the only allowed use. And at the time, this was approved because there was not a large pet retail store that served residents in San Carlos. And it was considered as a use that would not necessarily conflict with the downtown core itself. Since this time, which was early two thousands and even prior to that, but this, this most recent ordinance was two thousand and five, there's been a lot of changes in San Carlos, including the addition of many residential units, a lot of approval of commercial spaces, you're aware. And these developments, in addition to other decisions that the city councils made to help grow the economy, have contributed to a really revitalized downtown in San Carlos. That's, that's become a destination in and of itself. So the concern that was present back in the early two thousands about this competition with the downtown is really not as much of a concern as it once was. And so for that, that reason, staff is supportive of the proposals this evening in terms of removing the single tenant requirement as well as adding some additional uses. In speaking with the applicant who represents the property owners for the site, and the applicant's trying to attract a more diverse set of potential tenants by dividing the existing space. And speaking with the applicant, they've indicated that they have experienced quite a bit of difficulty in finding possible lesses because of the limited permitted uses, which again are pet related and the size of the commercial space. So they believe by removing this prohibition, as well as adding additional uses, they would be able to attract a wider range of tenants for the space. Now, regardless of this, there is no proposal to expand the overall footprint of the building. So exterior changes in the future could include signage or possibly additional, you know, entrances to get in. But beyond that, there's no proposed changes to the exterior or the footprint size of the building. In terms of the proposed uses, they generally, generally speaking, follow the GCI zoning, our general commercial industrial zoning with some exceptions. So I am going to go through an overview, just some of the uses that are proposed to be included. Those include banks and financial institutions, small scale commercial entertainment and recreation, eating and drinking establishment, so that could be like a convenience type place or a restaurant, as well as retail sales. Next slide. Minor uses that are proposed with the instructional uses are public safety facilities. Again, this is following the GCI zoning district. And then in terms of conditional uses, following the GCI would be colleges and trade schools and government offices. One noticeable difference from the GCI zoning is the, the use of office use. So the applicant is requesting that offices be included in this ordinance as a conditional use, meaning that were any office to propose, come forward or be proposed, it would have to go to planning commission for a used permit. And this is something that staff does not support. The preference in this area is to have tenants that generate sales tax revenue and contribute to retail and service, the retail and service oriented nature of the surrounding shopping center. The applicant is aware that staff is not supporting this. However, they are asking the PC to consider the option, which is in the purview of the planning commission. And I believe the applicant, Chris, will, will be speaking about this a little bit more after my presentation to provide some additional information on their perspective and office uses in this location. Next slide. The notice was mailed out to a three hundred foot radius, as well as published in the newspaper on December ninth. And we have not received any comments on this project. Staff does believe that the proposal meets the findings as outlined in the staff report. And this next slide is the motion. Should you choose to recommend this ordinance to council? In terms of next steps, if you do recommend approval, then this item would then go to city council for consideration in a first reading. I'm available for any questions and the applicant is also available as well. Thank you.
Questions from the planning commissioners before we hear from the applicant? Commissioner Darby? You're on mute.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Roof. One question. Is the building currently occupied?
It's not. So yeah, it's been vacant for a while.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no further questions at this time, let's hear from the applicant.
And I believe that's Chris Santana. You should be able to, to speak now.
Yes, I, I did see that it invited me. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you. Welcome.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Thank you Andrea for, for providing such a great presentation summation. I wasn't sure if I was going to have to do it, so greatly appreciated. And I, I think she did a great job in summarizing, you know, this is from an outsider's perspective. You drive up, you see the Home Depot and the Lucky's, the Dollar Store. And it's, you know, you see the retail and industrial as well, industrial in Britton there. And it, it just appears to be a traditional commercial retail zoning. It, it's logical for the area. And so just having some of those logical uses available to come to this building to provide the greatest value to the community, a stable business who is here to service the community and be viable. Obviously viability was an issue with the last tenant. And anyway, we appreciate the consideration. I know there was a specific comment with concern to office uses. The, the reason why that when we, we asked to include that, you know, again, going to a traditional commercial retail center, you'll, it, it's pretty typical to see something like Stanton Optical or dental services, professional services, whether it's tax returns, whether, actually I have a full list, but it's not in front of me right now. There, there are various medical type uses that might be relevant here that, that we feel might be a good fit at this location. So we didn't want to just outright ask for that, those uses to be allowed. However, to have a conversation on a, when, when those opportunities present themselves.
And through the chair, just to, to point out on packet page one twenty three is the start of the applicant's list of possible tenants, which also at the, the bottom of page one twenty four, talk about the office uses that Chris was just mentioning. So I just wanted to point those out. Sure, no problem.
Did you have any questions for me? I didn't have anything else specifically to address, as I stated. And Andrea did a great job in covering the contents that we had discussed previously.
Yes, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant before we open for public comment?
Oh, and I should let you know my role as well. I'm sorry, in the event it's not clear, I'm the leasing agent.
Thank you for that.
How long has the building been vacant now?
Chris, you're on mute, but maybe you know the answer to that?
I, I believe we're going on close to a year since the dog club has, not quite a year, since the dog club has been out of business. They've, they're technically on their lease. Actually, Tom's texting me right now. Hold on one second. Since June, since June. And.
Well, I don't have a dog now, but I love dogs and I'm wondering, is there any chance that another pet shop could, could go in?
Great question. Great question. So we actually are in, we, in lease negotiations with both Banfield Veterinary Hospital, who's looking to take thirty five hundred square feet and the other remaining square footage would be taken by Round Table Pizza is what we're looking to do, obviously conditioned upon the decisions that are made today. So absolutely. However, our dog swim club was not the most viable business.
Thank you. Commissioner Yakaponi, you have a question for the applicant?
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, Chris, and thank you for joining for some questions here. I, you probably have really gotten to the heart of it, but I was more curious about, it's a pretty rich list of of potential prospects and I was just trying to get a sense is, have you had like inbound interest from all of this group or some of this group or, you know, what's, what's the demand, so to speak?
Sure, the demand has been, we've had plenty of interest from restaurants and some of them that would not even be viable regardless of what the city decides and all, all the reasoning for that. For example, Black Bear Diner is very interested in going here. However, they can only, they need the entire fifty three hundred square feet. We also have Home Depot restrictions, which further complicate our, our pool of potential tenants. And Home Depot will not allow restaurants over four thousand square feet. So there have been plenty of restaurants that are interested in that under two thousand square foot range. The primary tenant that's been interested in the larger footprint, the thirty five hundred square foot, we really have been focused on Banfield, the vet hospital. Other than that, there, it's been, we've had interest from regional type tenants as well, like yoga studios and martial arts and such, primarily those businesses, the rents have been out of their range. And we do need to get approvals from Home Depot for any fitness uses as well, because they, those are also prohibited.
Thank you. And maybe if I could, the, the follow up that I had was, could you just describe, just educate me anyway, about the importance of being able to subdivide the space?
Sure. Retail tenants, any tenant, at fifty three hundred square feet is very specific. As you know, many tenants today are taking smaller footprints. It's a very specific size that's only utilized by a small handful of types of tenants. Being limited to that square footage, we, our, our list of potential tenants is substantially smaller. We eliminate the possibility of anybody who takes less than fifty three hundred square feet. I don't know. I feel like I might be jumping around on the question. Did I?
No, that, that was great. May, maybe it, it, so you've clarified that fifty. No, that that was great. May maybe um uh it it so you've clarified that fifty three hundred is a difficult number because it takes a special tenant and I guess that was the
A very specialized list. Exactly. It's a very specialized list versus when we can kind of cut it up. We can, we can be more specific based upon what the market is demanding and and really select the tenants that are going to best serve, the businesses that will best serve the community. Everybody wants a viable business, it's who's going to move in and stay here and and serve the community. And none of us want to see another business come in here, open up for two years and shut down. Um i- it's not good for anybody.
Thank you.
And I have a question. Is the Banfield Hospital uh potential tenant considered a retail one or a um or an office use?
They have a smaller retail type um component to them, but they are primarily services. And there was something and it's, it was something running concurrently. Andrea might be able to speak to you a little bit better?
If I could jump in because it is a pretty unique situation. So as I mentioned, the original two thousand and five ordinance and use permit um were specific to Pet Food Express. Um and so subsequent to that, um we have been able to as staff approve really only pet retail and services that can be considered a minor um change under the the zoning code in terms of uses. Um so Banfield specifically because they have retail and because they're operating characteristics are more in line with the retail slash service use, meaning they don't have a twenty four hour pet hospital. Um they're not doing grooming, which is prohibited by the original use permit. Um they're really acting more kind of in concert with the the surrounding retail uses. That was able to be approved at staff level. Um the uh by the director. The issue though came into uh, you know, into play was that the space was just too big. So we were, we were operating sort of under both of these things. So Banfield um itself is allowed because it's a pet service slash retail. Um but it's, it's pretty unique and we've had issues over the years. I think trying to uh find, find uses that fit under that. As you can see, we've had, you know, the dog pool club and the the pet food store as well. So um they are permitted, but they will not be able to do any work physically unless this ordinance is approved. Um because they need to divide the space and that's not something that staff can approve. It needs to be changed as part of the ordinance. I don't know if that answered the question.
That that clarifies it very well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there additional clarifying questions from the commissioners before we open for public comment? Hearing no further questions, let's see if there's a public comment. Um if you'd like to make a public comment on agenda item sixty, eleven twenty nine Old County Road, now is the time to speak. May join the Zoom meeting or call the phone number um and raise your hand on the screen or press star nine. And Sarah, is there anyone in the waiting room for public comment?
Not at this time.
Okay, if there is no public comment, then I would entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I'll move that we close the public comment period.
A second.
A motion and a second to roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. Well, now it's our discussion uh period. Thoughts from the planning commissioners? Commissioner Garvey, would you like to start?
Thank you Chair Roof. I'll I'll jump in and start. I don't know the reasoning behind making this a singular use with pet retail. But I can sympathize with the leasing agent that it's difficult to find, it may be difficult to find a tenant if it's just one single use. I am supportive of splitting it up, splitting the space up and allowing um multiple smaller tenants. I think that's a good idea. I agree with uh the Chris when she said that people are looking for smaller footprints these days. At fifty three hundred square feet, uh sounds like a lot of square feet. I read through the list of what was a possibility there and I I think that all of those uses would complement what's happening in our downtown core. As far as allowing offices, I'm on the fence with this and I'm curious as to what my colleagues will say. On the one hand, I I support getting a tenant in there and expanding the list increases the number of applicants that you might get. Um on the other hand, there's a, you know, there's a very different revenue profile for retail versus offices. And this is intended as a retail space. And when I drive into that shopping plaza, it's it's all retail. So it would be consistent with everything that's happening in the shopping center to keep it, to keep the uses retail. Um so I, I don't know how to come down on that one and I'm very interested in hearing what my colleagues have to say about the office aspect of this. Thank you.
Well, I'll jump in to say that I I certainly would support the um the division and the additional commercial uses. And the office, the office um use question is indeed an interesting one. And I wonder i- if I could ask staff to clarify, how often does the situation come up where a retail zone space wants to have an office use and is that something that's that, do we have examples of that happening in the past?
Um I would say probably the most recent example I can think of is is the Transit Village. Um and where some offices gone in there, some real estate offices. Um and that's, that's a little bit different of a, you know, of a profile, right? Because it's not necessarily in a commercial shopping center. Um I think for us, the concern really focuses on one, what's the most complimentary use and and active use at the site? Um so some of the office uses mentioned, you know, like a tax service. Maybe that is getting more of the public in and out, but the way our code and uses are are divided. We don't have any control over the type of office, so it could just as easily be a startup business that's using, you know, needs office space and it's not serving the public necessarily. Um and then I would say that the kind of second concern is that even if a use permit is required for office, the findings to meet that are pretty, I don't want to say straightforward, but I don't know that there would be I don't know that the the, you know, economic considerations would line up a hundred percent with the finding. So it might be more difficult at that time to say no to an, an office use that's been um been presented at the time. So I I, you know, I think we don't really know how it would shake out. Um we've seen a lot of office uses go in the downtown, especially like real estate offices. Um that have taken up what we would consider, you know, retail space, but that we might want to keep retail. So I know, I know there's a concern about, you know, kind of losing the space, but I don't know that I have any specific examples other than, you know, downtown, some walk-in services being utilized. And I think that that's really the only thing I can think of. Lisa, can you think of any other ones that have come up?
No, I think you described kind of the general nature of what we've seen and in certain zoning districts, as Andrea mentioned, that we're really looking for a more active uh retail space. So that's an example where that zoning district specifically um limits the ground floor ops um on the ground floor.
Okay. That helps, that additional information helps me quite a bit. Other comments from commissioners?
I don't have any specific, I agree with what's said by fellow commissioner.
Yeah. I guess my tendency on the office space use is that um we have the zoning code distinguishing those two uses and this is one and and in this location, um it's designated as um as commercial. And so without a a stronger imperative why it should become office than what I've seen, I wouldn't be uh be supportive of making that sort of an exception for that. And I I do note that the tenant, the potential tenants that are uh that are lined up, you know, would be able to go in. And so um my inclination would be not to add on the office use, but to uh but to approve, to recommend the uh this the division the divisibility and the uh and the commercial use.
Maybe uh for me, a question for staff, for either Lisa or Andrea. So let's um, i- if the commission supports staff recommendation and I'll say for now, uh Lex did not support the office addition, but the other two elements are fine. But that's like not permanent, right? The applicant could come back in a couple of years and make the case as to why there's a higher and better use for the city by proposing uh office, right?
Uh yes, absolutely. And in fact, um even if the commission did not want to include it, um the applicant could also bring it up at the city council first reading and ask for it from council as well. So they still have the opportunity to request it. But the commission's recommendation in either way would would be, you know, shared with the commission or the city council, obviously. But yes, either way, they could come back later or bring it up again when it goes to the city council.
Okay, thanks Andrea. I I think um, you know, like my fellow commissioners, the idea of being able to subdivide makes complete sense. So full support there. The list of of um proposed businesses that would be approved, uh absolutely support that. It seems, you know, from a degree of freedom of one to many, many seems a a much better way to position this parcel within the larger retail area as you know, better for the citizens of our uh our fine community. And um I'm, my thinking was um captured really by, I think Andrea's statement where this area is designed to be retail um and serve a retail customer base. That seems good for me for right now. So I would say I would not support office at this time. Uh because I think there would be a lot of other great opportunities for both the applicant and our community.
Thank you. Any additional comments from commissioners? Commissioner Garvey?
Thank you Chair Roof. I appreciate the the, all of the uh reasonings laid laid out by my colleagues and I would concur. It's an active re- retail space. I'd like to keep it an active retail space. Um and at this point, I'm, I'm going to concur and uh not support the exception or the addition for offices. Thank you.
Okay, well, um can can we have the recommendation on the screen, please? I would entertain a uh a motion.
All right, I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt an ordinance, amending ordinance thirteen sixty-three.
To a second.
I have a motion and a second. A roll call, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Moving along, item seven, reports, correspondence and general information. Starting with a report on recent city council actions.
Yeah, sorry, I've been at a city council meeting.
Oh, I'll go. I think I heard somebody in the background, so I think
Yeah.
in our step. Um thank you Chair Roof. Um I just wanted to report, maybe some of you have heard by now that on December thirteenth, we have um a new um mayor. Uh Sarah McDowell, our council member Sarah McDowell was appointed as mayor for the incoming year for twenty twenty-two. So I wanted to congratulate her and share that with the commission. And aside from that, no additional uh recent city council actions from now um until twenty twenty-two during the second week of Ja- uh January twenty twenty-two, the council will be on break.
Okay, going to be planning commission comments or reports. Commissioner Yakaponi?
Thank you Chair Roof. Um in this week's um notification that our packets were ready, I picked up a note by Lori Cudworth saying that um she was retiring from service with the city. And so I'll take that at face value. And I just wanted to uh say for the maybe four years now, three and a half years, uh thank you for support uh with all of the materials that that we use and getting our packets ready. Wish you well in retirement. And I hope you have a lot of fun. And then also a welcome to Nicole Rios, who I understand will be working with going forward.
Thank you. I'll, I'd like to echo those comments.
Yes.
And Commissioner Bradley, did you have a comment there?
Just that um I I want to uh express my appreciation for all of hard work Lori has done in support of the planning commission and the staff. I talked to that personally and I think it go to on the record.
Okay, moving to item number C. If there are no further confession, I should make sure. Are there any further planning commission comments or reports? Okay, now moving to item C, correspondence.
Thank you Chair Roof. Um I did want to mention that um I think it was within the past week that I sent an email to the planning commission with the uh twenty twenty-two calendar year um meeting schedule. Um and in that meeting schedule, I did mention that the year uh the year will sort of kick off with a special meeting on January the twelfth, which is a Wednesday. And that'll be a special meeting um to hold the scoping meeting for the Focus General Plan Update Project, which uh consists of the housing element, land use and safety elements and an accompanying zoning um update. So I just wanted to make sure that um the commission was aware of that and and noted that um that is in your email inbox. If you have me at all, received it. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention is that um just for the record, um earlier today, staff did send um a public comment uh to the commission. Um that was in regards to agenda item six A one oh four Sunnydale. And I think you all uh noted that um during the presentation, but just to put that on the record. And uh no further correspondence.
Get a clarification on that scoping meeting. The, I think that both the planning commission and the city council encouraged us uh to take a holistic view of of the the housing issue as well as the innovation district um planning. Um is is that going to kind of fall under the um? How's that going to fit with this, with the scoping uh going forward?
Well, I think um the way that we would deal with that, it's it it is an implementation item um out of the East Side Innovation District Vision Plan. So that is something um that we would look at as we consider the full project description for the environmental impact report for the housing element, safety element and land use element updates. So that's something that staff is um uh looking at and will be working with our consultants to consider that as one of the scenarios perhaps in the EIR. Um that will be uh is still being discussed, but that's something that we would bring up during the EIR scoping meeting as we present that project description to the planning commission. And again, this is a reminder, the purpose of the EIR scoping meeting is uh for the commission and the public um to attend and and make verbal comments and comments in writing about what they feel is important and should be evaluated uh within the confines of the EIR itself. So um so that is the purpose of that meeting.
Yes. Yep, and it's it's important um because what's in scope or out of scope really makes a difference as to how things um are discussed going forward. Okay.
Our next meeting will be the thirteenth of January and that'll be our only meeting in January, and that'll be our only meeting in January.
Okay, so I'll move on to item number G. So just just so we can get an update on what's happening next. So tonight is our last meeting of twenty twenty one. Congratulations, we made it through here. And our first meeting of twenty twenty two is actually canceled. So no meeting on Monday, January third, canceled. The the first meeting of twenty twenty two will actually be on a Wednesday. That's January twelfth. This is a special meeting for the EIR scoping meeting for the focus general plan update project. So that's a meeting that will start at six. We'll send out the information, we'll send out a public notice, there'll be a link to that meeting. Similar to the planning commission's regular meetings, except it will be on a Wednesday and accept that it will start at six P M. And then for the first regular meeting of the planning commission in twenty twenty two will actually be on Tuesday. So we're kind of mixing it up a little bit, but it just happens to be of the holiday. The second Monday of the month would actually fall on a holiday. So our first meeting, regular meeting will be January the eighteenth, which is on a Tuesday. And we will be having a study session on a new state law that was recently passed. Some of you may have heard or referred to it as Senate Bill nine, S B nine. And this has to do with single family law splits and provisions for two unit development. So. Staff has been working on that, and we will be coming forward in a study session context with the planning commission on January the eighteenth. And then we also will have a another scope EIR scoping meeting. But this will be for a project, a development project at five oh one Industrial. Which is a proposed new hotel right next to the residence and right there on Industrial and Holly. So as of right now, we have two items that are scheduled for January eighteenth again, which is on a Tuesday, regular meeting, so starts at seven. And then the first meeting in February would be on February the seventh. So that's sort of an update on our calendar going forward. Again, check your inbox. If you have any questions on that, feel free to reach out to me. But we won't see you, we won't plan on seeing you until Wednesday, January the twelfth at six P M. And we will send out email reminders for the commission on that. And then I don't have any reports or updates of current projects. I think we can probably do an update on some of our long range planning projects at the outset of the new year to kind of. Take a look ahead and see how we're progressing on those and what's anticipated for 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 this upcoming calendar year. And aside from that, I just would like to personally wish everyone a very happy holiday season. And best wishes for the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Merry Christmas, everyone. Great working with you. I think we have a really fine planning commission, and I know we have a great staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. Well, happy holidays to everybody.
Holidays. Staff and fellow commissioners have a great restful season and even better twenty twenty two.
See you all next year.
All right.
Thank you, and we can adjourn.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
All right.